2015 Regular Council Meeting, the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Canaan please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and if we could remain standing, Councilmember Larson will offer an invocation.
(Inaudible) from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Eternal Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to serve the Council for Riverton and we ask that Thou might bless us with insight and understanding that we might say and do those things which would help our citizens. With that in mind, Father, we are thankful for the moisture which Thou hast richly blessed us with and we say this humbly, Amen thy Son, Jesus Christ, Amen.
Yeah.
Would the City Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Jonathan Fabian from tonight's meeting.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion to excuse Councilman Fabian.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. I declare that we have a quorum and the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, will you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council or regarding an item that is already on the agenda, I will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record.
I think I'm well-known, but I'll identify myself, Jim Davis, Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I gave you two pieces of information tonight that I would like to briefly go over for you. One is the visitor center information that we hand out quarterly to you and then a year-end report. It's the number of requests we get through the different various means of walk-in and phone and email and relocation and visitations from the website and then the number of packets that we've put together both for the last quarter of this last year and then for the year-end wrap-up. I think that probably you'll be getting this information again, but I gave it to Kristen two or three days ago, but I don't think she's got it out to you yet, so I thought I'd mention it tonight while I was here. I did a little quick math, last year you were generous in giving the chamber or contract for services with the chamber for the visitor center of just a little over $20,000 and if you figure out how many requests we had for information, that was about $1.35 apiece, so that was a pretty good bang for your buck. The second piece, any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward. The second piece of information I gave you is on our Tourism Asset Development Fund that comes from the Lodging Tax Board. This is our mid-year report of how much disbursements we've given so far of the $102,000 that we awarded and this is a report that we report to the council itself, Visitors Council, on a biannual basis, so I thought I would bring it to you and show you where we're at with disbursements so far. We've dispersed out of the $102,000 about almost $36,000, almost $36,500 to different entities in the community and some of these things haven't happened yet, so they will be coming forward with their requests later on in the second half of the year, so. There again, that's a lot of good money that we invest to the community to have the events that we have in the community. Any questions? The other thing I would like to mention, we're going to have our third Alive at Five tomorrow night at Bar Ten and we'd like you to come out and we're going to have pulled pork sandwiches and a bouncy house for the kids and I think Jason told me he's going to have steak sandwiches also and then hot dogs for the kids, so that'll be from 5:00 to 8:00, you know, weather permitting. Hopefully we'll get it out of the system tonight and we won't have a repeat, but the weather man's not cooperating very well, so.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate your report. Anybody else like to talk to us tonight?
Well, I'm Lloyd Eckstein, actually Reverend Lloyd Eckstein to be exact, Riverton Community Food Bank. We put $9,225 is what we got in grants and private funding. We did 41,000 pounds of food or better. Nancy had surgery on April 28th. We're back in business, I'm sorry it took so long, but United Health bought us for three months, we had to fight them to get her to Colorado to have major surgery. Nobody in Wyoming would do the surgery. We are open now from 4:00 to 7:00 every Tuesday and if anybody has got an emergency like we have, we've helped out fires, Sheriff's Department, anybody needs help, call us 463-0141 or my little track phone is 840-0727 and we'll set an appointment up so you guys, people can get food. There's people out there that need food, we try to help out like burn funds and stuff like that and Family Services call up and says we got a new family coming into town, we got seven days, you know, in between, can you help us? So we, and everything we give out, you have to cook, you know, and everything is basically pastry, you know, not pastry, it's, we've got a whole list of canned goods and stuff that we give out and we, sorry that we have been running behind schedule because of my wife's surgery and everything else. We just got a new van given to us and I'm not saying who gave it to us, it's on County 10 and I apologize, we weren't supposed to say too much about it from Senator Enzi, but he gave us a '97 van with $145,000, personal van for the food bank.
Wonderful.
So anyway, we're back in, you know, into it. We'd like volunteers, I know Mike there said he'd be a director of board, so we will take him as a board and you as a board member too and the rest of you guys can be volunteers. I know, I'm going to throw it out now.
You, sir, you can come too. Let you. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, appreciate all the work you do. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the Minutes June 16th, 2015 Regular Council Meeting, Approval of the Minutes June 30th, 2015 Special Council Meeting, Approval of the Minutes June 30th, 2015 Finance Committee Meeting, Approval of the Minutes July 7th, 2015 Finance Committee Meeting, Approval of Finance Committee Recommendations for July 7th, 2015, Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the Month of June, 2015, and we received two open container permit applications from Bar Ten July 8th, 2015 for the Live After Five, and that's the street in front of the Bar Ten from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM and also for July 17th for a car show in the street in front of the Bar Ten at 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM.
Are there any items that we need to discuss?
Your Honor.
Mr. Larson.
Finance Committee met this earlier today and we voted on a consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $1,153,608.73 checks written or payroll on liabilities for June 26, 2015 in the amount of $454,722.05 for a total of $1,608,330.78.
Thank you. Your Honor. Mr. Bailey.
I do have one correction to the June 16th minutes, the first paragraph doesn't show me present and I was there. I mentioned later on in the document, so I'm sure of that. And also I would abstain from any items regarding Bailey Enterprises or Wix.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, motion passes. I'd like to announce the appointment of Doug Malik to the Planning Commission, could we have the Community Development Director's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The City of Riverton is assisted by Citizens Advisory Boards in formulating policy and procedures. The Boards for the Community Development Department include the Planning Commission and the Construction Board of Appeals. Recently, one of our Board members, Kim Johnson, resigned from the Planning Commission. We will miss her experience and expertise and we want to thank her for her service to the City of Riverton. We had, earlier this year, received a letter from Doug Malik expressing an interest in serving on the Planning Commission. We held that letter hoping that we would have an opening for him. With his background and knowledge of the community, we believe he would be an asset on the Board. He has nearly 48 years' experience in construction and he's held a master's electrical license for 19 years and he believes that he, also that he could be an asset if he's selected to become a member of the Planning Commission and he does have vast knowledge of city and state permit regulations and variances. Staff members would recommend that the mayor appoint Doug Malik to the Planning Commission as an alternate for the term ending in January 2018 with concurrence of the City Council.
Thank you, I agree with all you said and pleased that Mr. Malik, who's here tonight, would volunteer his services to the City of Riverton in such a significant and important capacity. I appreciate your willingness to participate and so with council approval, I'll make that appointment as there, entertain a motion to that effect.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion that we approve the appointment of Doug Malik to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye and motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Malik. Okay, the next item is a public hearing, consideration of a bar and grill liquor license for the Bull Incorporated doing business as Manhattan Eatery and Pub. Could we have the City Clerk's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor, the City Clerk's Office received an application for a bar and grill license for the Bull Incorporated doing business as Manhattan Eatery and Pub. Everything is in order, the fee has been paid and the Liquor Division has certified the application is complete. And I believe Mr. Confer is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Let's open this hearing and then you can talk, Bob. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to open the public hearing, is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye. Motion passes, I now declare the public hearing to be opened, the hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
My name's Bob Confer, representing the Bull Incorporated, and I apologize to this body for having to do this in such a short period of time after the first one was issued, but we thought we had the property rented and that didn't work out and so we're going to operate the property and I'm very familiar with the liquor laws in the state of Wyoming and city ordinances after operating for 18 years with the restaurant liquor license in the City of Riverton, so I would just like to ask for your approval and answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Clerk, is there any other comments?
Your Honor, hearing, no other people up to speak, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes, mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be closed, the Chair would entertain a motion to issue a liquor license, a bar and grill liquor license to the Bull Incorporated doing business as Manhattan Eatery and Pub.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we issue a bar and grill application for the Bull doing business as Manhattan Eatery and Pub.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey.
I guess I have a question, I don't know who for, but is there any rule against having two licenses at the same premises at the same time that we know of? I mean, because we had issued the previous one at that address. As far as I know, we haven't moved it or anything.
Your Honor.
Could you, has that other license disappeared?
It did. Mrs. Fulmer relinquished the license and we have an agreement in her file that she is no longer part of the agreement, so, and you're absolutely right, you cannot have two licenses at one location.
Any other concerns? Ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Thank you, Bob. The next item in business is a public hearing and consideration of Ordinance 15-007, first reading. Could we have the Community Development Director's report?
Yes, Your Honor. The Riverton Municipal Code has setbacks from property lines where buildings are located. In the Residential Code, a building situated on an interior lot must have a front yard setback not less than 20 feet and a side rear yard setbacks of not less than five feet. We have applied this code to all buildings that have been built from the time that the ordinance was passed and that included portable storage buildings such as skid-type structures. Per the International Residential Code, portable storage buildings 200 square feet or less do not require building permits. So one of the council goals is to reduce regulations and so also to be more consistent with the International Residential Code and to eliminate usually unusable five-foot area around these small storage buildings, we would like to propose an exception to the setback requirements. We would like to reduce the regulation and allow one-story detached accessory structures used as tool and storage sheds, playhouses and similar uses to have a one-foot rear and side yard setback provided to meet the requirements in the ordinance. And the one-foot setback is so that when they do have a little overhang, the water from their buildings is not draining onto another person's property, so we made that be a one-foot setback. These requirements are that the structure is exempt from permits, the floor area does not exceed 200 square feet and the accessory structure is a portable or a skid-type structure and the one-foot setback dimension is measured from the property line to the closest projection of the structure. This actually will also bring other existing storage buildings into compliance because there's a lot of them around town that have been set much closer to property lines than the five-foot. That's all I have.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please read Ordinance 15-007 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, this is proposed ordinance number 15-007 on first reading and ordinance amending Title 17 zoning to revise Chapter 17.16 General Requirements, adding Section 17.16.080B to setback requirements exceptions of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye. Public hearing is now open, hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Hi, I'm Nancy Eckstein, I just have a question with, if you have two people on the corners of property and they're both one foot, that's a two-foot gap between them essentially, my question is what about the fire codes? If their buildings are that close together, if they're tool sheds and whatnot and stored gasoline and stuff, that's my only concern. If there happens to be a fire, what would that do?
Yes.
Skid structures being that close together.
Now, Ms. Lars, can you answer that question?
Yes, I can. If the structures are 200 foot or less, they are not required to have the fire-resistant construction being basically could be two foot apart and I'm assuming it's because it, you know, it's got to be a skid-type structure, they could easily be moved away like they were put on there, it's a skid-type structure, those are the only ones that are required, that are allowed to be that close. A garage can't be, anything permanent can't be, but you could put like playhouses and those types of things, but they would be required to be, I mean, if you had anything larger, it would be required to be the five-foot setbacks.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, when I think of that and I think of one of those little skid structures and a neighbor has a skid structure, say you have four lots and so you have little two-foot things and they catch fire, it could cause a huge problem is my only concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment on this?
Your Honor, hearing, I move, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye. Public hearing is closed and the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 15-007 on first reading.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we adopt Ordinance Number 15-007 on first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Larson.
So, so we're discussing temporary buildings, skid-type of 200 square feet or less that can be one foot next to the property line. I didn't know we had ordinance. Ignorance is no excuse.
We do have, we do have an ordinance that now requires those buildings to be five feet from the property line.
It's good to know.
I've had it for a long time.
And Your Honor, I think that's part of the issue is that a lot of them around town don't meet that five foot, they're somewhere between one and five and so this really helps to make people more compliant and it meets the code requirements that we have in place.
So this is based on the International Building Code, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor, the International Building Code does not require, I guess, buildings to be fire-resistant construction if they're within a foot of the property line, so the International Building Code, it's any building that doesn't require a permit, which any kind of storage building, temporary storage building, that is 200 feet, square feet or less in residential areas, then they are not required to, well, they aren't required to have a permit and they're not required to meet the same setbacks.
Ready to vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a plat of the Country Club Village's second edition, Riverton. Riverton Country Club, Riverton, Riverton Country Club petitioner. We're back to the community development director for another report.
Thank you, your honor. This plat is located on Country Club Drive at the turn into Riverton Country Club Clubhouse. The area is just south of Country Club Village's first addition, but it has never been platted. The petitioner, Riverton Country Club, is requesting a one-lot subdivision to provide for the house that is located in this area and on the corner there and to separate it from the golf course property. A twenty-five-foot easement is proposed for the gravel road on the south, which is also the access to the Country Club. There are ten-foot easements on the north and the south and a fifteen-foot easement on the east. There's also a twenty-foot water and sewer easement running diagonally to the north of the house on the property from the northwest corner to the east. There are some irrigation valves within the property on the proposed plat and those will be addressed by the Country Club. We did send out reviews to utility companies with no conflicts received and the Riverton Planning Commission did recommend approval of this replat on June eighteenth.
Your honor. I would recommend approval of the plat of the Country Club Village's second edition, Riverton Country Club petitioner. Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. The next issue is a county plat, Rivera Estates, Todd Poulsen petitioner, community development directors' report.
Yes, your honor. This is a plat that, it was similar to one that we reviewed just recently. It's property that's located west of Rain Tree Estates and north of West Mountain View Drive and north of Poulsen Estates, which, Poulsen Estates, which was platted in 2010. The subdivision is outside of, within one mile of city limits. And this is basically a re-review of the first plat that was reviewed by council on June second. That plat had four lots and now the petitioners have changed the plat to include five lots. A simple subdivision includes up to five lots in both the city and the county. The developer proposes to extend city sewer to these lots and the community development department sent out requests for utility reviews and the public works department had no problem with the proposed water, or sewer extension to this area. There is no water in this area. There are easements on all sides of each lot in the proposed subdivision and continue north of the cul-de-sac. The county planning commission did have several issues with this subdivision in this area and they have been addressing these items with the developer, petitioner Todd Poulsen. Most of the concerns of the county planning commission have now been addressed, therefore it is staff's recommendation that council now approve the new five-lot plat. The planning commission reviewed the five-lot plat on June eighteenth and recommended approval and the Fremont County Planning Commission reviewed it on the twenty-fifth and approved the plat with the changes that had been made.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I would recommend approval of the county plat, Rivera Estates, Todd Poulsen petitioner.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor, I guess, I just have one comment and I just think it is a bad idea to have cul-de-sacs. They don't work very well for access and I know this is out of the city, so it's sort of beyond our hands, but in any way possible, I think we should avoid them, but.
Says an old guy who used to be on the planning commission.
Thanks for the old comment.
Okay.
But, your honor.
Mr. Larson.
Don't we have cul-de-sacs up in big Wyoming, a bunch of them?
Yes, we do and.
And have we ever had problems up there?
Yes. They create, yes, your honor. They create issues for trash pickup, you know, the bigger trash trucks have a hard time getting in and around. Fire access, you know, because there's really only one way in, one way out. So, again, they're sort of a bad idea. If any way possible, we connect it to an existing road. Again, in this case, I don't see, the canal's on one side and there's a drainage ditch on the other, so it's going to be a little tricky, but they just, they're problematic.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. Ms. Lures getting a workout tonight. County replat of Lot fourteen, Sunnyside Edition, James D. Mole, Edna, and Bernard Cole petitioners. Community development directors' report, please.
Yes, your honor. This is also a county plat. The property is located north of Webwood Road and west of Smith Road on the south side of Sunnyside Avenue. Their replat will divide Lot fourteen into two lots. These lots are developed and have existing structures on them. The Fremont County Planning Commission reviewed this replat on June twenty-fifth. The lot configuration as it is on the replat is what the petitioners originally requested, but they now have extended the line between the two proposed lots straight to the south property line after reviewing it with the county. A utility irrigation and drainage easement was proposed around and between both of the lots. These have now been decreased to ten feet since the county review. This was done in an attempt to eliminate some of the encroachments of existing buildings. There is a well located on Lot fourteen A with a shared well agreement for the two properties and the county did request that the document number for this agreement be put on the plat as well. And with those changes, the City of Riverton Planning Commission recommended approval of this replat on June eighteenth.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make the motions to approve the replat of Lot fourteen, Sunnyside Edition, county plat, petitioners James D. Mole and Edna and Bernard Cole.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
We're dividing these two. I assume that we have that was a two-acre lot and now it's going to one acre lots each. Is that right?
One point zero eight acres.
Something, yeah.
According to this little map that I got here. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. The next item in business is future agenda items to be presented by council member Canaan. So, Mr. Canaan, have at it.
Yes, sir. I'll do the second one first, if you don't mind, because I think we just had two good examples of it. Now, we went through an issue recently with a replat and come to find out that the council really has very little say in replats as long as they don't violate the law or a city ordinance or code. So, we already have the planning board take a look at it, they verify that everything is good with it and then it comes to us basically for a mandatory yes vote. Talking to Mr. Weber, I guess there's a state statute that says that those replats have to come before the council. They can't be just, I guess, passed off to let staff handle them for us like we do with the open container type permits where staff does all the legwork and then staff does, recommends approval. But since they do have to come before the council, I would recommend that the easiest way to handle those is to put them in the consent agenda. Again, the planning board looks at all the regulations, they look at all the codes, the ordinances, they're only going to recommend approval if they, if they meet all those. And I think if the council has any questions on them, we can always pull it out of the consent agenda and discuss it separately if we feel the need to, but I think just, again, to save the time of going through it and giving the mandatory yes vote, I would recommend that we move.
Any other discussion? Do you need a motion?
Well, your honor, basically, you just need to give us some direction if you want to go in that direction and then we can make sure that happens in the future.
Okay.
So, yeah, motion be fine.
Mr. Larson?
I think what he's talking about is zoning on parcels of ground or zoned, single-family dwelling.
I think you're on the wrong one there, sir.
Not yet.
Talking about the second one.
Oh, okay. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We're all okay doing that?
Yeah. Your honor, I would, I would make the motion that we do put those items that are just for our blessing, replats on the consent agenda with staff giving us a heads up if there's any issues that don't meet our specs, so.
It's been moved, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Second item. First item, your first item.
This is the one that Mr. Larson was talking about. And again, I think this issue came up recently when there was a replat request of a residential B area that was, has been predominantly single-family duplex-style homes and then all of a sudden here comes the request to put two six-plex type housing units in there. And I think that caused a lot of problems, not only on the council, but in that neighborhood. I think, let's be honest, if you read the definition of what a residential B area, you probably have to have that in the back of your mind that that could happen to the neighborhood. But I think when a, when a neighborhood is established with single-family type homes and duplex-type homes, that is a big impact, all of a sudden have a large, a large housing unit come in. So, my recommendation is, is that we change the definition of residential B zoning, that we allow only single-family duplex and townhome-style homes in residential. That we move four-plex and six-plex style housing into residential C that basically is already designed to handle the larger type of.
Any discussion of this? Mr. Larson.
On that particular one, when you buy a property and you look at it and everybody's property is seventy-five frontage and hundred and six foot deep and you could put a duplex on that or you could put a townhouse on that, but a townhouse would have frontage of only twenty-five feet. So, again, you're going to shorten the amount of footprint that the dwelling's going to have. Single-family dwellings normally are seventy-five hundred square feet or sixty-six hundred square feet or something like that. But to come before us and say we want to build, because the zoning allows it, a six-plex on a property that historically has been a duplex or a single-family dwelling, I think is an invasion of property rights. And that's what happened up there. And, you know, I feel that it was right that we turned that down and that we looked at it, but we need to protect our citizens. That's what we're here for. And we need to protect them from us, ourselves, from making stupid zoning deals that allow six-plexes and commercial buildings to be built where they have no usage. And so, I'm for exactly that, changing that to C three or whatever, so it's at the bottom of the list and everybody understands where it is.
Your honor.
Mr. Bailey? I guess, just to play devil's advocate there, you could also say the same thing about the guy that buys a piece of property with, it's Zone B and that is his expectation because there is a lot of, not a lot of six-plexes around, but there's a lot of four-plexes, you know, rental apartment kinds of four-plexes that are in Class B property and nobody's really ever had any major issues. I mean, there's issues occasionally. I guess, to me, the challenge I see is that what do we do with all these four-plexes that are in class residential B right now? I guess they'd get grandfathered in. We really don't have a lot of C residential zoned property out there. I guess I'd like Mrs. Lures to tell us what we do have that's Zone C that those would fit in then. So, I think it raises some other issues and I'm not saying that I'd want a six-plex next to my house either, but I think, you know, there's a lot of those four-plexes running around town that blend right into the neighborhood and a lot of people don't even know they're there.
Your honor, I'd like to make one comment regarding the, one thing we could do in the ordinance is your issue of the people that already have four or six-plexes in Zone B, we could put a provision in there that if they were burned to the ground, they could be rebuilt because that, that becomes an issue if they were burned to the ground. Under the existing code, you would have to go back to what it is now, which then they would have to build single-family duplex or a townhome. I've seen that in other codes where they've added that provision in there to basically help the people that already have things in non-conforming, but allows them to rebuild if it was burned to the ground, but any other type of thing, you would have to change.
Your honor, I'd like to make a comment that, on this same issue, I think that we need further study on this not to make any kind of decision tonight and let staff work on that instead of us trying to make a decision and right off the top of our heads without even studying this, so my recommendation would be to let the staff take a look at that and see if they can come up with something that's feasible.
Let me, yeah, let me comment some thoughts that I've had on this that for some time I've thought that, I guess I don't understand zoning very well. And, and so, it looks, it looks a little contrived to me, you know, the way it was drawn out at the time that they did it to try to meet what already existed in Riverton. And in some cases, they fit it pretty well and in other cases, they don't. And Mr. Weaver's mentioned several times that to him, it's confusing that we, that we call it residential A, B, and C because then we turn around and use C for commercial property. And, and then we've got this master planning process that we spend a lot of money on and they, they go with a rather simplified version of zoning over what the city of Riverton has. And while we can kind of match up in some ways our various zones to the ones that they suggested, they don't exactly mesh perfectly or overlap just right. And, and so, I've thought for some time that it wouldn't be a bad idea to go back through all of that zoning and see if we couldn't fix it and make it look like it was a little bit more sensible. And yet, I know the amount of time and effort that that took when that was originally done, that wasn't something that somebody thought up on the planning commission and passed in two minutes. Instead of that, it took months and months and months of working that out and compromising to arrive at the current zoning that we have. And so, then you are reluctant to dig back into that and stir it up, but there certainly are, as Councilman Canaan has pointed out, some inconsistencies in, in that, in that process. So, I guess I hate to initiate a full-blown overhaul of the zoning code because I know that that would be really involved and yet I think we need to study a little bit in order to figure that out so that we could have a sensible, straightforward, more understandable zoning for the city of Riverton. Right, so is that?
Your honor. I also found out in the past, we've had zone changes and ordinance changes, they all went before the planning commission to work it out before anything happened, before we got. we got in, and I think that's the best way to go, that the planning commission does to look at this and see if they have any ideas to come up with that.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be, that would be fine to run that through that process and bring it back to us and, and, and see what, see what kind of adjustments we might be able to make that would make this, you know, more compatible with our master plan and maybe take into account, you know, future development for the community.
Yeah, your honor, the, basically the point of the future agenda items is to see if the council's just as supportive of, of looking into it. Staff would do that homework and then it would be my recommendation to send it then through the planning commission and then up to the council instead of going right back to the council, because they can flesh out a lot of those issues. Staff will do our best in that, but mainly just to see if, if you want us to put the effort to look at these things, if you think it, it is an issue, if, if it's not an issue, then you need to let us know.
That's, so that's, that's what our, what we need to do here is say, is that worth our effort or not? Okay, no, is that worth staff's effort or not? What do you think?
Well, I'm, I own two fourplexes that are surrounded by single family dwellings. And if you were buying next to me, you would drive up there and see that fourplex on either side of the house, you would see it. What I'm objecting to is vacant ground where you don't see anything and then you build and then I put up a sixplex next to you.
Right.
That's my objection. Now, it's just like, I didn't know there was a airport in my backyard, well, how did you miss that? But when I build an airport in your backyard, it's very easy to miss and especially when you're objecting.
Yeah.
Your honor, I would, I would make a motion that we ask staff to review this item and if necessary, take it to the planning commission to at least relook at zone B, maybe look at all the rezoning as they have time, but we could prioritize this and do it a piece at a time possibly.
Seconded. I don't think we need a motion, all we have to do is recommend to staff to do it.
Well, but we've got a, a motion, a motion works as well and we've got one on the floor. So been moved and seconded.
Has it been moved and seconded?
Yep.
I seconded.
Mr. Larson seconded. So, so I think that that's, that, that we've got that, that we're going to send it, we're going to ask staff to look into it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, thank you. Council committee reports and council members roundtable. Mr. Bailey?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Canaan?
Sir, the Volunteers of America, Center of Hope are going to be having their second annual empty bowl event. They've already scheduled the fairgrounds for October 29th from 5:30 to 8:30. Similar to last year, they'll have a variety of soups and bread that people can, can sample, have a silent auction, they're going to have some games and some prizes for the kids. And as like last year, they're also looking for event sponsors, table sponsors, donations for the, the silent auction, people that want to make soup, just like last year. I would say that if anybody's interested in doing any of those activities, being a sponsor for that, I'll give you the, the phone number to call at the, at the Center of Hope is 856-9006 and they could probably answer your questions or sign you up. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
We met last night for the rec board, Fremont County School District 25 rec board and we just paid bills. One of the big bills that we did pay was the Central Wyoming Skating Association for, we gave them their $30,000 that they had requested two years ago. And that's all I have.
Mr. Larson?
I don't have a report, I just want to state how fantastic I thought Little League's fireworks were and there were a lot of people there watching it. Thank you very much for the time and effort that is put in for the support of that facility.
Ms. Gibbon?
I have nothing at this time.
Lee covered the.
She did.
Covered it all, huh?
Yeah.
I tried to get her to do it, but she wouldn't do it.
Well, that's what I heard, next, maybe next time we'll start on that end and push her a little harder to be.
Cheat sheet behind the chair.
Okay, to be involved, okay? So city administrators report?
Yes, your honor, the auditors will be in city hall next week, all next week, doing the audit and would invite any of the council to come down and visit with them if, if you'd like. Just give us a ring or, or come on down. We did have a nice dedication ceremony for the Center of Hope in addition to that. Probably most people don't realize it, but that whole backyard, they've really improved, they put a fence around it and got gravel and grass and basketball hoops and horseshoe pits and really kind of a homey, homey place. We also had the mayor of Hudson call us up and say, hey, our mosquito, mosquito sprayer has, has blown up, can you help us out in any way? And lo and behold, we had three mosquito, what do they call them?
Trucks or?
Foggers.
Yeah, foggers that we don't use anymore, that we're kind of just sitting, not using at all and so we're, you know, give that to them and provide some assistance to them. So I was grateful we were able to do that. Also, we've been advertising for a vacancy in the force committee for some time and had no response, so I would encourage anybody out there that's interested in this important committee to put a letter of interest into the, into the mayor. This is the committee that provides recommendations to the council on the 1% monies and how it's being spent and overseeing that, it's really an important committee and it, I think it would be an exciting committee, so I'd encourage people to apply for that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Wow. Mayor's comments. So I, I just have to reiterate this, this open house that we had or ribbon cutting down at the Center of Hope, how impressed I am by the work that those folks have been able to do in the short time that they've been involved. And it really has made that into a different kind of an operation and, and the city of Riverton is, has benefited as a result of that. And so I urge anybody in the community that has any interest in it, any questions on how it operates to give them a call and take a tour, give somebody on the board like Mr. Canaan a call and he can get them in there. I appreciate his service on meeting with them on a regular basis and the chief. And I think the money that the city of Riverton spends there is well spent. Mosquitoes, that used to be my job and, and it isn't really anymore, but Nancy, Nancy Pirapan with the Weed and Pest sent me the report. And so I ought to give you a mosquito report. We started trapping back on the 9th of June and at one particular location, there were 168 mosquitoes in the trap that night. The next week, on the 16th of June, there were 388 mosquitoes in the trap. And on the 23rd of June, there were 85. So that's after two weeks of spraying, the numbers have dropped down quite a little bit. If you go outside of town and look, that same time period, we had 900 mosquitoes in the trap. Last week out of town, we had 1,400 mosquitoes in the trap. And, and back, and back at that original trap site, there's 112. And so the mosquito numbers are pretty high, but we're still in the 90% effectiveness range as far as the mosquito fogging activity for the city of Riverton. That's pretty significant. The other thing that's interesting to me is the, the number of, early, early on, we had very few Culex mosquitoes and they were, so they were mostly ADs, Vexan was the species and so with a species name like Vexan, you can, you can get a feel for what they do. These are the guys that, you know, during the broad daylight, come up out of the lawn and chase you. Okay, okay, so they vex you. And, and so they're really very aggressive mosquitoes. The numbers of those mosquitoes is dropping. This week, they're, they're down, but the, the Culex Torsalis that spreads West Nile virus is on the increase. So what we're going to see is with increased effectiveness, maybe we'll never get to that point in Riverton this year because we've got so much water to deal with, but with increased effectiveness of the fogging operation, people forget that there's mosquitoes out there. And so they don't wear deet and they take off their clothes because the weather's hot and they run around in shorts and flip flops and tank tops and they get bit. And with the temperatures that we've had, we'll have some West Nile virus this year. So we need to be careful and pay attention because as, as good as we are, we still wind up with some Culex mosquitoes out there and, and those are the guys that are going to, going to get us. We had a chance to go out to the honor farm today and talk to the warden out there and he's given us a blessing that we're going to start running a spray truck on honor farm property, it's inside the city limits and, and up to a couple of years ago, we did it and then we got into a little problem getting through the gate. So they're figuring out now how they're going to meet the truck and, and give us a guided tour. And so the spray truck will show up out there, what that'll mean is we're going to spray about 1,000 acres of agricultural land, which produces lots of mosquitoes and that should give us some real benefits to the north end of Riverton. So maybe we'll get our program a little, little bit ramped up there with a couple other pieces of property that lay around the outskirts of town, we should see maybe an improvement in, in our mosquito control. I don't have anything else. Anybody else have anything else? Entertain motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.